Good evening. The Foxborough Planning Board will come to order. And for everyone's knowledge, today's, what is today's date?
Fourth.
The fourth. The meeting on the fourth is going to be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. And some people will be coming in via Zoom as well. So review of any old or new business gap? Anything?
No, I don't have anything. We wanted to keep the meeting open for the discussion.
Okay. And no action items either?
We have the minutes.
Minutes, yes. Did everyone have a chance to read them?
I did.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October 26, 2023, and November 30, 2023?
I'll second that. Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Well, we got a couple of minutes to...
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not a public hearing. We can go. So the first agenda item is for MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Work Sessions. And trying to see if there... There we go.
Are we not using staples any longer?
The machine doesn't have staples, so it does the unstable.
That little funny thing? So this is going to be, this item relates to alterations to the Foxborough Multi-Family zoning. And we're going to talk tonight about Foxborough Multi-Family Overlay District Bylaw, and it will need to be amended going forward. So there may be a variety of overlay districts that'll be impacted. I'm not sure exactly how you want to proceed with this gap, in terms of going through the actual document, or you want Barney to speak, or...
I think that Paige is leading the charge on this.
Are you available, Ms. Acting Town Manager?
Hi, Paige.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I've got the COVID. But I'm lucky I'm not sick, so I figured it's fair you all sharing my germs.
Paige, is there possible to turn her up a little bit? Okay, they're turning you up. You just are very, or I'm going deaf. Now she's muted.
Now she's muted.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Are we hearing you now?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Better? It's not too often that I'm quiet, so, yeah. So anyway, yeah, we wanted to have this initial discussion. You know, we all went to the Select Board meeting. We had the joint meeting previously on November 30. And we wanted to offer this opportunity to kind of do a work session with the Planning Board and start going through the nuts and bolts. I will let Barney run that charge since he's our zoning guru and wrote the bylaw. But just by way of background, for those who don't know, we did work with a consultant and come up with this district. We chose it on the basis that we think it, as discussed on November 30. And if anybody hasn't seen that meeting, it's available on Foxborough Cable Access's YouTube channel. If you Google that, you'll find it. But it had some helpful context. But anyway, we think, you know, we do think this is going to be a challenge to get it approved by the town of Foxborough. And so we were trying to find one that stands the best chance and impacts the neighborhoods the least. And so that is sort of the Cliff Notes version of why we chose this. But we thought it appropriate to bring it to the Planning Board for a work session. And I don't know if there's anybody in the audience, but if anybody had any questions to kind of go through some of it before we go to public hearing in February. So that's kind of my intro. I do think we, I know you have copies of it. I think it's probably best we go through it and see if there's some issues that come up, unless there's anybody in the audience. I don't know if the Craft Group came. I know they were concerned about this. I don't know if we want to, you know, hear from them before we dig into this, or how we want to handle this discussion. I'm open. It's kind of a work session and to sort of air things out before we take it to the formal process of public hearing. So I'll hand it back to you, Kevin, and see what you guys want to think in the room.
Want to bring the Craft Group up?
You guys have comments or...
Just some bigger picture.
Got to come up to the table.
Yeah. I'm Autumn Paige.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Dan Krantz, Beth Whirling with the Craft Group. Again, not being a public hearing, I didn't want to take a lot of the board's time with this. I still think it would be a good idea to consult the landowner. I know the consultant was in, and they've picked a particular parcel, but I, you know, the personal belief is I still think that would be a good idea. And then I know that there's been some conversations with, that I'd asked some folks to take a look at this. And I don't know, Barney, if you can maybe throughout your part of the presentation, speak to it. At least what I was told, there might be some potential compliance issues within this. And I don't know that that is true or not, but I was told that that might be a possibility. And I think there was a discussion that was slated to happen today. And I would be interested to hear the outcome of that. But again, I think at the end of the day, we can do it at the public hearing. We can do it whenever. I'd like our voice to be heard. I don't think today, right now, is the time or the place for it, but...
I think we need to hear it soon, though.
I'm ready when you are.
Paige, is there a plan for...
Well, I think now might be the time, Dan. I mean, we, just so you know, we are going to, I did, I saw the concern that Peter raised with Barney, and I forwarded that to our consultant. Unfortunately, it was later in the day, so she wasn't going to see it tonight. But I am having her check the compliance model to make sure that there's, you know, nothing, I mean, we use the compliance model provided by the state, so we have every reason to believe it's accurate. But of course, we will double-check that and make sure that the numbers are, that pass the test. But in the meantime, I think it might be helpful for you to sort of make your case, if you have a different location, not saying, you know, again, we're coming forward, just to be clear, the consultant did not recommend this location. This was something that Barney, Gabby, and I came up with. We were the little subcommittee. And, you know, I know I'm not a voter in town anymore, ever. Gabby's no longer in town. So we, you know, we as staff did this. And that's why we wanted to bring it to the Planning Board, to help make this decision. Like I said previously, we think this, where the location we chose was the one with the most likelihood of passing town meeting, given the neighborhood concerns. But I think it's certainly fair to listen to the Craft Group and hear what they're proposing or what they might want to propose, to see if the Planning Board wants to look at that. You know, not knowing where that is, I can't say whether I would agree with it or not. And I think, you know, it almost comes down to politics and votes. But, you know, certainly, we're not looking to take away their voice. We're just not necessarily saying we're going to agree with them. And it's ultimately up to the Planning Board. So I think now's the time.
I understand, and I appreciate that. Thank you. At the public hearing, I'll bring some of my consultants, and we can speak to that. Again, this parcel as particularly laid out, I don't believe is the highest and best use for the town of Foxborough and its future would necessarily be for residential. It is some of the prime property in the Economic Overlay District. And as this board has seen in the past, it has had plans for future development. And so I don't know that putting housing there is probably in the best use for the town. But again, that's one person's opinion.
And just to clarify, it's just, it's districting. It doesn't mean anything's going to be built there.
I understand that. And then to pencil out things economically, there's just some guidelines that, you know, within the EDA, you can go up to 70 feet. And I now believe that this has been put down to, I think, 35 feet. And, you know, now you're trying to make a three-story apartment building, and that's really, what you're really asking for is townhouses there. And I don't think that that's viable in any solution. So I will say to Paige and to the board, I think we will come back for the public hearing, and we will be prepared to offer some alternatives. And if the Planning Board or some representation from the Planning Board would like to see that in advance, we would be happy to share that.
I think we need to get going on it, because if this is going to go in front of town meeting, it may.
My fear is the public hearing's a little late. Usually, at the public hearing level, we have a bylaw, like we do, and we're looking at, you know, that bylaw. To Tracy's point, if we, you know, if we wait till that night, and then you start raising chain, you know, I don't know how, what you're thinking about, and I don't know how much of a dramatic change is, but it's always hard to work within, like, we're going to have an advertised hearing. And certainly, we could have a discussion, but it will be a bit of a challenge.
Do we need the question to March?
Dan, do you have alternative locations you are thinking of? I mean, is there something...
I don't have them here with me right now, Paige, but we do have locations that we would like to discuss with the town as alternatives.
Then, I mean, a couple of questions. A, can the public hearing be moved to March? And then...
It can be, but the town meeting warrant closes February 15. And, you know, I think you guys are going to have to decide. I mean, you're the sponsor of the article. And, you know, I mean, certainly, the Craft Group could do a petition on their own, but, you know, it starts to get into questions of whose article is it? What's it going to look like? I mean, we could put a placeholder in, but, you know, it start, I know, you know, when it goes, starts going to AdCom, and you know Tracy, we, I mean, it's, we're kind of late right now, even though we thought we were early. Now, if you introduce all that into it, it's now kind of late. So I don't know. We were hoping to actually start the public hearing on February 8.
Which we can't do it and have that be, as you said, Paige, the first time we see what the Craft Group is thinking.
Paige, if I may, does it have to go to this town meeting? Can it wait till the fall?
No.
No, it does need to go. We can't guarantee there'll be a fall town meeting, and we have to be, we will be out of compliance by December 31. So we're going to need to try it in May.
So the next meeting's on the 25th?
Yeah, Kevin won't be here for that.
I won't either.
So you know.
But I am here for the 8th. But let me raise this as well. I mean, this, if, depending on how important and how critical we think this is, it would not be out of the realm of possibilities. The town has done special town meetings before. So, I mean, if it's going to be, if it is an important deal, and, you know, and we can't make it work for the May town meeting, I don't think you have to wait for the fall. We could have another special town meeting in June, July, whenever that thing is, whenever we need to do it. If you're concerned about being in compliance with the state, then let's discuss that matter. If you're, if it's, but if it's really more a question of getting something, just getting something on the books, then that's a different matter, too. If we attempt it for the special, and we don't have a quorum...
We'll get a quorum. We'll get a quorum. My thing is, and I don't mean this rudely, is, I mean, we, of course, they're an important part of our town, but basically, I mean, this decision is up to us. The input can come from the Craft Group, but ultimately, what we do is our call, correct?
Yes.
And they have the right to put forth their own zoning, you know, alternatively, they could have their own zoning article if they wanted to, and, you know, the town could choose one.
Okay.
And wearing my town, wearing my acting town manager hat on, I would not recommend we try to work to another town meeting. It's just, you know, logistically, it's very challenging. It's, it's, it's cost money. You know, we've gotten away from the fall ones only because of the budget process. They, we're no longer allowed to do it anytime close to the tax recap, tax setting, and for a variety of reasons, we've been challenged. Not saying it can't be done, and not saying there won't be a special, but I think counting on that, you know, for this reason probably isn't the right reason. If we had to, I mean, we could figure out how to make it work this spring. It's just, I think it's up to the Planning Board to decide, are you entertaining alternative locations? I mean, I can speak to, I mean, this isn't the Craft Group speaking, but I think one of the locations they may or may not put out there is the terminals. The other one is they have residential land over off Ashcroft in that area. So, and again, I don't know if that's what they're talking about. They might also be talking the stadium side near the railroad tracks. So just throwing out those as possible, again, uncorroborated, you know, does the board feel like the community would support any of those locations?
If they're close to the residential, I don't think they would.
If that's something you want to entertain.
I don't think they would if they're close to the residential.
I would, you know, and even with this particular location here, while it may have a higher likelihood, I wouldn't, I wouldn't forecast what a town meeting would do at all. You know, I mean, I think this may be the best, the best initial approach, and therefore, it would be the smart play on behalf of the Planning Board to present, and zoning Board to present that to the town meeting.
As is.
And that doesn't mean that I would say that we in any way would ignore anything that the Craft Group would want, any input that they would want to give us. But I just, you know, so I'm not opposed to us going the direction that we've already started in. I just brought up the special as a, it just popped into my head that, you know, it's not an impossibility, but it probably is not the smartest way for us to approach this, because it could become even more confusing. If people are sitting on the fence, they may not be, they may be even less likely, forgetting even whether we're going to get the quorum there or not.
And from an AdCom perspective, I mean, there is a lot of friggin' work that AdCom does on the, for the May town meeting, for the Spring town meeting. This, I mean, this could just be held towards later in their discussion agenda. So, first of all, my next thing is, why can't we do a placeholder? We've done it in the past. Why wouldn't we, why can't we do it here?
We can.
We can. I just, we have to make sure we have the right, you know, we have to just do it right. And honestly, we were feeling ahead of the game and hoping to get this, you know, because it's so important, we were really trying to daylight this early and get it out on the streets. We're actually have a consultant, we have an RFP out right now, to get a consultant for outreach, to really provide information and education on this process. So it just makes it more complicated, you know, the less certain it is. But obviously, we can adapt. I think that's a more reasonable thing, is that we adapt as needed. Again, if the board wants to go that route. You know, I think the Craft Group should probably send proposals over as soon as possible. And, you know, whether we have to have a meeting prior to February 8, or whether we bump it till later in February, if it's warranted, that's, I guess, fine. I think we were just trying to do this as clean as possible, and for once, have like the warrant, have the language as proposed, rather than having to amend it on town meeting floor and all that.
Paige, I'd like to ask a question. If we went forward with the proposed area for the zoning change, and then a better opportunity came forward, how would we proceed with that?
If it was voted?
If it was voted, yes.
We'd have to, it'd have to go in front of town meeting again, right?
Correct. And not only that, we need to get state review, like, the state has to review it for compliance. So once, you can either ask for preliminary review, or you can ask for a review after it's approved. And so we, that step would be, but I mean, it can be done, you know, if we got through the whole process, and then the town meeting wanted to vote to do it in another area and rescind this area, it could be done. It's just all town meeting action and then state review.
Okay. I don't think I'd be comfortable moving forward with what's presented right now if we're going to consider looking at a different location. I think it's just going to muddy the waters.
Honestly, I feel differently, because I can't see there being a better location in town. I think this is the lesser of the evils. So why prolong this and confuse people versus, you know, and we can show to the state that we've at least put this forward. And if it fails, it fails. And then we've got all the time in the, not all the time in the world, but we've got more time. But I can't, you know, even based on, you know, what Paige is guessing from a Craft's perspective, there's not going to be anything less offensive, anything less offensive than this.
To the, to the, to the body, to the public, yeah.
To the general, to the residents of the town. So honestly, I think keeping it clean just puts it forward. This is the least offensive for the town. Obviously, we'll phrase that much differently. And let them vote on it in the May town meeting.
Well, I've said from the very beginning that if we go to the state with this proposal, are they going to think we're just trying to pull it over their eyes? Because we are.
But you don't think other towns are doing it? They didn't, they should have put guidelines then.
I don't know. I mean, I think we're going forward with... I don't, I don't agree with that, that language. I don't, I don't, no, I don't. I mean, this is, you know, this is, is it ideal? No, it may not even be ideal for the town, and maybe not be ideal for the Craft Group either. But at least it's, you know, when we looked at other zoning areas, including ones that were not even anywhere near the Craft Group's lands, that included places where we already have affordable housing capability, then, you know, the general consensus among people who heard about it and talked to Paige and I about it and others, was that, you know, they thought that that would attract even greater congestion in residential neighborhoods. And that was an issue. So that was one of the ways we wound up with the proposal that you see before you tonight. And, 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 look, it's not going to be ideal, and I don't, I don't feel like we're trying to pull the wool over the state. It's really going to come down to a local initiative. Will the, will the public who comes to town meeting be willing to approve this at all or not at all? You know? You know, and will we, can you get a majority to say, yeah, if we're going to do it at all, we'll do that? They may still throw the baby out with the bathwater. Yes, please, Mr. Krantz.
And I understand all this, and at the end of the day, it is a Planning Board issue. All that I ask is that we have a voice.
We don't have time for you to have a voice right now.
We weren't asked for a voice either.
You weren't asked for a voice?
No.
So I do have a question about that. Why is Dan here, thinking he doesn't have to put forth the proposals, and we were expecting the proposals put forth? Was there some communication breakdown? Because our expectations, it sounds like, and his expectations, are very different of this discussion tonight.
I just know, no, there was no breakdown. I mean, I think that what, the bottom line is, we made the decision to come up with a proposal that we thought was in the best interest of the town of Foxborough, and recognizing it might not be in the best interest of the Craft Group. And that's pretty much it. And, you know, I did tell Dan to come tonight so that he could have a voice. You know, I might have thought there'd be further, you know, maybe, I don't know. I don't want to say anything about that. I just, listen, we're not going to do the work for them, and we're not going to, this isn't about, honestly, I hate to say it, the Craft Group. This is about the town of Foxborough doing their job and making sure they remain in compliance. And certainly, you know, we're interested, and like I said, they have the ability to do their, they are landowner, they can petition for zoning. I think we listen to them. It's just, it is getting late, and I don't think that we, you know, I think we continue on as we plan. I mean, certainly, we can discuss it with Barney and break it down, and we're going to check on the zoning to make sure it complies, and make sure the compliance model, which again, was provided by the state and prepared by a consultant that was, you know, paid for by the state, you know. So it's no offense, I shouldn't say it like that, but you know what I mean? Like, it was no, listen, we have a job, and the job is to serve the town of Foxborough and their residents, and to do the best interest of them. And to Ron's point about whether we're circumventing anything, absolutely not. This is within a half a mile of the train station. It's within the radius, identified, and, you know, told to us by the state. That's what we're doing. You know, it's vacant land, you know, it meets the letter. So we're doing what we're supposed to do, and we're actually giving it, we, you know, like Tracy agreed and others agreed, the best chance to pass in the town of Foxborough. And I agree with Kevin, it might not pass. And we'll be able to have it pass the straight face test that. I also fully understand Dan and Beth's perspective and what they're, what they need to do. And I think we'll listen to them, but I think we also just have to keep moving forward.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good faith effort to stay compliant, get our job done. I just can't see it flying in the eyes of the state, though, that you're trying to put in a zone on the opposite side of a major highway with terminal here.
But that's for them to decide.
That's what I'm saying, though. Why would we want to go forward with something that...
But here's the thing, the people who are dealing with the state has said we're going to be fine.
I agree, but I'm just saying, my personal opinion is, I don't think it will fly.
Okay.
And I don't feel comfortable going to the state with something that I think is almost insulting.
I don't think it's insulting.
I don't think those...
I think it's answering the mail, and I think...
I could be wrong.
I think we go forward with it as we've discussed it previously, and let's see what happens. And then in the, we'll continue discussing with the Craft Organization, but I don't think we can halt this process because of, don't, you know, they're not ready, and that's totally fine, and totally respect it, to share with us their feelings. I think we've got to go forward. To Paige's point, we serve the town of Foxborough. And this, and this proposal, you know, is not nice as we think it all is, it's the lesser of the evils. Let's put it out there. Let's get a reaction. Because if they say no to this, they're going to say no to any, probably anything else. And then, and, you know, they need to do so well-educated about potential lawsuits from the Attorney General, loss of grants. I mean, we've got to make this, the education on this warrant article is going to be friggin' huge. But I think we got to keep it moving.
I agree.
And Ron, just so you know, like, I think this is us hedging our bets. I mean, in a way, in the sense of, we can present this to the state, meeting, you know, we're in the half-mile, we're meeting the letter of the law. And if it, say it passes, which we all agree is somewhat remote, but if, say it passes, versus we go along and we do something over by North Street, and then it doesn't pass, you know, I think that the bottom line is, we are required to pass a zoning district. We are not required to build it. So I think is, you know, giving it the best chance to pass, whether anything ever gets built or not, is, you know, that's not what we're being asked to do. We're being asked to zone it.
No, Paige, I fully understand. We've had all these conversations. I just don't feel good about it. And it's got nothing to do with the Craft Organization. I just don't feel good about the fact that we're trying to put a zone on the opposite side of a highway that you got to get across to go to a train.
No, but here's the thing, there's, they said within so many miles of...
Tracy, I know what it says.
They don't say, don't separate it from other residential areas.
I know what it says. Trust me.
Well, then you can vote. When we vote as a board, you vote no.
Okay.
Totally fine. But I, you know, we're here to protect Foxborough, not the state.
So am I.
Then, this is the least offensive to the residents of Foxborough.
Okay. Let's see where it goes. Warren, you want to...
Sure, why not? As long as I'm here, I'm going to say something, right?
Please do.
So I just want to reiterate a couple of points that I made at the joint meeting. Number one, I tried to draft something that was as relatively simple, in the interest of the town, and complies with the state statute. And I think this, this does it, with a caveat, which I'll talk in a couple of minutes. Second is, I'm a drafter. Whatever you want, I can revise. However you want me to revise it or not revise it, I'll go in that direction, as long as we still comply with the statutory requirements. I had a telephone conversation today with Peter Tam, who is legal counsel for the Craft Group, and he did iterate some of the points that Dan made, you know, relative to the fact that they feel that there are better alternative sites. And he mentioned a couple, but again, I don't think that was anything, anything official.
Can I ask a question? Better to whom? Better to Craft or better to the residents?
Peter framed it as better for the town.
Okay.
Okay, just like I think Dan did, you know, a few minutes ago.
Okay.
What really concerned me, however, and I sent an email to Paige late in the afternoon, I know that she contacted our consultant, we need to have a zone, and within the zone, an area of at least 50 acres, 15 units per acre. Peter seems to feel that the area that we've designated is less than 50 acres. He indicated he thinks it's about 39. He also feels that the minimum, that the height requirements that we've imposed, and they can be 48 feet, Planning Board can go to 48 feet, in addition to the 35 that's in the, in the table, as well as the land area, the minimum lot area, would not allow us to get to 15 units per acre. So I mentioned this to Paige, you know, late in the afternoon by email. I know that Paige contacted the consultant. I hope that the consultant's numbers and modeling are correct, because if that's the case, what I've drafted does comply with the state guidelines. If it's not, we've got to revise it, obviously.
Right.
But again, if there are alternative sites that the board feels are more appropriate, I'd be happy to, well, maybe not happy, but I would be, you know, certainly available to make those changes to comply with whatever your requirements are.
And it's within a half a mile of the train? Is that the-
Is that hottest? This, yes.
At least 40%.
And we're using the Foxborough train station.
Yes.
So has somebody, don't laugh, you know that thing that used to go around as a kid? You put this thing in the center and the pencil went around?
It's actually in the map.
The protractor, right?
Perfect. Protractor, don't laugh at me.
It's that thing, was that thing?
So this is, this is it?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, and then this map is right here.
And that blows up this portion.
So, I know I'm not in a microphone.
Let me up.
We've got the whole stadium, which can't be used, the whole stadium property. And then encroaching into, is this panis and, not panis and-
No, that's the terminals.
Which is going to abut all this residential area, which we've already went through with the warehouse.
Right.
I don't think there's any place else to put it.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't know that, I don't know that. There may be other, there may be other place, there, there may be other places to, to, to put it. I don't know whether they would be able to get 15 units an acre in that other place. I don't know if that other, the other places would meet the sniff test of the 50 acre minimum or maximum, whatever it's supposed to be. I don't know whether they would, you know, whether they would have a height requirement that would be more of an issue to, to existing residential neighborhoods. Because we, we haven't seen anything yet. So-
If I can, can I chime in for a sec?
Please, go ahead.
Just so you know, there is some quote unquote flexibility in the requirement, in that I believe it's 40% of the land area, the zoned, needs to be within a half a mile of the train station. And the remaining land can be anywhere else in town. And also, we can have sub-districts. So you could, for example, you know, have a district that allows 30 units per acre in one small, in one part of it, and then a lower density another. The net needs to be 15 units per acre over 50 acres. So there is some flexibility. And as Kevin somewhat alluded to, we did look at other areas. We looked at, you know, splitting the district and putting only 40% up by the stadium, and then putting the remaining 60%. We could put it over like the lodge and the Sylvan and that area. But that was when we started getting some feedback. And again, it was a very small test group. It was sort of like asking residents on the fly what they thought of that. And there seemed to be a lot of fear around introducing, you know, that kind of density or the perceived density into the community further. So there is some flexibility. We could be more, you know, make it more complicated. As Barney mentioned, we, we kept it very simple. So I don't want to mislead anybody. We could do, you know, only 40% up by the stadium, and then we could find other areas to put the remaining land.
If I could make one other point, you know, Dan mentioned that in the overlay, the economic development area overlay, there's, we, we do allow buildings to be up to 70 feet in height. What we have as far as the proposed draft here, as far as the multifamily housing, is comparable to the other multifamily housing in, in Foxborough as far as height.
With the, with the exception of density.
Yep.
But the height could be waived by the-
Up, up to 48.
We couldn't waive it any higher than that?
If you want me, I could draft it that way.
Because it's in the overlay.
In fact, I think we, we talked about that originally as a possibility. But yeah, I could certainly draft it to whatever height you feel is appropriate.
Okay. I, I, I think we're getting, you know, we're putting the car before the horse. I think, I think this is the proposal. We should review whatever we're going to review tonight on the proposal. We should give Dan and his, and his group an opportunity to get us information as quickly as they can regarding alternatives or multiple zones or whatever it is that's on their plan. You know, if there's any, any further information or feedback from Peter or any other representatives of the Kraft Group, they'd be welcome in as well. But in the meantime, we should put this on the table and start to move forward with it. And if, for some reason, the light goes off for all of us and we decide that Barney needs to do some redrafting, we could talk, we could talk about that. But in the meantime, for tonight's purpose, and for, so that we can at least stay on track and get it going towards the May meeting, we should go, we should, we should go where we are. And we'll give them the opportunity to, to get involved. That's, that's my recommendation.
I agree.
I agree.
I was going to say, would it be possible to pull some more of this information together and have a meeting of the planning board scheduled for next week? Is that something we could possibly do?
We don't have the meeting room. We're meeting tonight because next week is the town manager interviews.
Okay.
Right, okay.
Just trying to think if there's a way to-
How about the week after?
Well, that would be the next meeting anyways.
Oh, no.
So I was just trying to think of-
No, because then-
The week after is ZBA.
Right, right, right now, we don't have any applications, but I'm not going to be here that week, so.
Because the, the week, I mean, does it have to be a Thursday? Could we meet the week of the 15th? You won't be here either?
Actually, no, I will be here in January. I won't be here in February, in the middle of the month, I'm sorry. But we do have a ZBA meeting on the 18th, I think it is, or 16th, whatever it is, the Thursday, the month, we do have a ZBA meeting.
We could look at Wednesday, the 17th. I have no idea if the room's available, but that's a night we can look at. Or Tu, Tuesday is not available. Yeah, Wednesday night's the only night that possibly might be. I don't think AdCom starts meeting yet, but I would have to verify that.
Yeah, I have nothing on the 17th.
Um, let me just, I can do the 17th. No, I can't do, hold on, nope, hold on.
By postponing, what are we gaining? An opportunity to get more information? From another possible location?
But if our own staff has said they've looked at every-
Right, but there's also other information from their council that needs to come forward as well. And I'm just saying-
I, I just, I, I, I understand that Kraft should have a voice, but I, I just think they're being given too big of a voice, especially when it's not mandating them to do anything. It's an overlay district. Like, they could just look at it and ignore it and never want to build there. And if they want to build there, they can build there. Like, I, I just, we're not forcing them to do anything by going forward with what's been presented. So I just don't understand why their voice should be so loud as I'm sensing other people think it should be.
I don't know that it's been loud because it hasn't been heard.
But I don't, don't take this wrong.
I, I already know your point, Tracy, you've said it. But I'm just saying, as a sizable landowner and taxpayer, I believe-
Paige, let's, let's say we put forward this proposal for town meeting. By some amazing thing, it passes. So we have it, we have it, we're in compliance, we have a zone, a zoning district. And the Kraft Group or others who would like to develop somewhere elsewhere in the town came forward and said, listen, great, you're in compliance, but we have other alternatives we'd like you to review. Would that be available to do, you know, in the fall or a, or a year from, a year from now, then? And then go back to the state and say, this is a new, new, a new thing we think that brings us into compliance and is more palatable to the town or whatever, blah, blah, blah? Can you come and, can you-
Absolutely.
You could.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's just like, we talked about, it's just a zoning change. And, you know, we just have to get the compliance checked. But I mean, I think we can, I think rather than making it so difficult, we just, maybe we look at what's here tonight and just see if there's anything that jumps out at you guys. And then plan on, I mean, one of the things we wanted to do tonight was check the head count for the February 8th and the February 22nd meeting. You know, maybe we just plan to start, you know, the Kraft Group can get something to us as soon as possible. Maybe even let them present on the 8th, hold, maybe hold a public hearing, maybe delay two weeks. I don't know how, exactly how to play that out. But I do think, rather than making this extra onerous with extra meetings and whatnot, we just, like we talk about, talk about the placeholder way. Again, we were trying to get ahead of it. But I think we just, we shoot for the February meetings to start, to get a better into focus. You know, what they bring forward might not be palatable to you guys at all. So it might be an easy answer. Or maybe it'll be something that you go, yeah, we do want to pivot, and we'll find a way to do that. I mean, heck, we're always behind the eight ball on zoning, aren't we? So why not do it again?
Okay, so why, in the spirit of that, why doesn't Barney, at a high level, just walk us through what each section says? And anything jumps out, we let you know. And then the next meeting, whether it's the public meeting or not, Kraft can, they can, just like any resident taxpayer, they can have their say. I don't know what else to do. Not much else. Because I don't think we delay the whole thing.
Well, let's, let's ask, is everybody here February 8th and February 22nd? Let's do a head count.
I'm here the 8th, but I'm not here the 22nd.
I'm here both.
As far as I know, I am-
I have, I have planning board on my docket here, and I, 22nd, I am not here. I can zoom in, but I won't be, I won't be local.
I could try to be here or I could-
February, February 22nd, you're on Zoom?
Yeah, I could be on Zoom, no problem.
Same for Gary.
Gary, Gary, you on Zoom as well?
I'm not, I'm going to definitely schedule you.
Okay. Tracy, you're around on the 22nd?
Yep.
And everybody else is here on the 8th?
As far as I know, I'm available for both, so.
Yep.
Yep, I'm here on the 8th.
Do we want Gary to run this through? Or do, no?
I think we could have Barney present what he's already worked on, yeah.
Yeah.
Because one of the key things for me, though, is we don't even know if we're compliant yet, so.
Well, that's the other, so we haven't heard back from the consultant, Paige?
No, that went in this afternoon, so.
No. No, but I, I, I don't think that's that big of a deal. I mean, honestly, you know, we could find 11 acres, I'm sure. And I, I mean, I don't know the, the exact issue, and I don't know that it's, whether it's true or not. If we don't have enough density, then I think one of the reasons we kept the height, and Barney, correct me and Gabby if I'm wrong, but I think with the height at 70 feet, we were going to end up way over the number of units that, you know, because we have to have 50 acres. So I think if you make the height 70 feet, then you're suddenly able to do quite a bit. And we were going to be well over the 1152. So I think we could tweak things. So I don't think the auto-compliance thing is insurmountable at all. We could always add an adjacent parcel or, you know, adjust the height depending on where the auto-compliance is.
Okay. Barney, you want to walk-
Barney, do you agree with that? Barney, is that-
Yes. Want me to go through this?
Please.
All right.
Could, I'm sorry, we have a public hearing at 7:40. Could we take, it's probably going to take five minutes, is an accessory apartment.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Hello.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for taking us out of order.
Yes, thank you.
You going to read anything in, or do I need to? No, no, I'll, I'll read something in. Okay. It being sometime approximately 7:42 PM. We have, we have a public hearing for an accessory apartment at 12 Thurston Street. The applicants seek approval to continue the use of a previously approved accessory apartment. Brandon and Susan Clapper, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
Good evening. Well, I'm just, this is Susan, this is Brandon.
Yes.
These are a couple of neighbors in, in the neighborhood who are interested, and they were concerned that this use, if approved, would never become a two-family. And I've assured them that you would never let that happen, and we're not ever seeking to let that happen, so.
His assurances are correct. Well, it would, it can only remain an accessory unit in the way it was designed and approved originally. And if we allow them to continue, we've had a number of these recently where a family previously had done this for a family member and then moved on for whatever reason. And then the new owner as well has, has a need for either a parent, a child, or whatever, to live in the, in the place. And, and we only approve it based on the existing guidelines if the original was approved. So it can never turn into anything more than that. And if, and if they were to leave and the new resident didn't want it, you know, then, then it would, we would cease to, you know, continue it.
The, the reason why we bought this house is because it was perfect for our situation. We were looking for something already that had an accessory apartment for me, which is mom.
Yes.
So anyways, that was the situation we were looking for. We were either going to find something like this or adapt wherever we bought. We were going to do something like this. So it's something that, it's not going to be an extra rental, it's going to be my house.
Anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I think it's, it's basically a straight continuation of the use that's been there since about 2003. I think we, you know, we, we understand what the typical conditions are, they all make sense.
That it's a family member.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. We're fully aware.
The original drawings are here?
Yeah, I submitted floor plans and plot plan from '03, actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
And some photos of, from, from the listing where the Clappers purchased the property. So there's front and back elevations and side elevations, it's-
So no changes to exterior, no additions?
Driveway staying the same, everything.
No changes at all, sounds like.
No.
And septic is, septic's viable?
Septic's a three-bed, limited to three-bed.
Okay.
And I think the board of health's okay with it and signed off on it, so.
I don't have any issues with it at all.
I don't either.
Nope.
Want to make a motion?
No, I just, let me just go through this real quickly. Health department has no objections. Fire department has none. Submitted plan shows the smoke detectors installed the code. Scotch chippy, the building, the building commissioner has none, has no, has no issues. And Gabby has some correspondence with Mr. Lovely. That's it, that's what's in the file. So yeah, please.
Gabby, you're, you're all set with it? Yep. Okay. I make a, a motion to approve the accessory apartment at 12 Thurston Street.
Let's close the public hearing first, please.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the accessory apartment. Application submitted for 12 Thurston Street to Brandon and Susan Clapper with the standard conditions in place.
Second that?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Well, we do appreciate when folks like you do come in with this, because there are many instances over the years where a legal or a not-legal second, you know, accessory dwelling goes right by the way, you know, we never see it.
We didn't want to run into any issues in the future. We just wanted to make sure it was legally done, and.
Yep. We're very appreciative of it.
That's why we stopped our RASCO to have this done before we finish.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Take care, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to you, Mr. Overett.
You guys treat Jeff Lepley a lot nicer than the zoning board does.
Oh, not all the time.
I'm digging up again.
So, I'm, I'm not going to go line by line, but I'll just try to give you sort of an overview of the various sections, including there, there are three changes that I want to make. They're relatively small, but I'll point them out when we get to them. When, when I drafted this, I had the advantage of having the proposals that three other towns were considering. Mansfield, which I think had already passed theirs, Sharon, Lexington, which has now passed theirs, as well as the Model Zoning Act that what was then the DHC, the, had prepared. So I pretty much tried to follow that format, and also tried to follow the format that we have as far as other overlay districts. So Section 9.8.1 just deals with the, the purpose of the, of the overlay bylaw. And as you can see, it's to allow multifamily residential development as of right in accordance with the, the applicable statutory provision and the compliance guidelines. Section 9.8.2 establishes this as an overlay district. And obviously, we still need to specify what the, the map is going to be. But, but this, again, just establishes this as, as an overlay district, just as we have established other overlay districts in town. 9.8.3 indicates that the provisions of the existing zoning bylaw that pertain to the underlying districts, that includes not just the underlying fact that this is in the S1, but also the underlying overlay district, remain in effect to the extent that they don't conflict in any manner with, with this proposal. And again, stop me, you know, as you have, if you have any questions as we go along. 9.8.4 establishes what the permissible uses are for the, the new overlay district. Obviously, multifamily dwellings of 12, of, sorry, 15 dwelling units per acre are allowed by right, and that's consistent with the statute, consistent with the compliance guidelines. Second, accessory structures to multifamily dwellings, and they're allowed by special permit from the Planning Board. And three, that uses that are permitted in the, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District, and uses that are permitted in the Special Use District, and uses that are permitted in the overlay district, the Economic Development Overlay District, in accordance with the applicable provisions of the bylaw, are allowed in the multifamily overlay district, consistent with those other provisions. 985 establishes the dimensional requirements, and we have them in Table 9-3. And here's the first of my, my changes. If you look under the column, it says maximum, maximum height of dwelling units, the word "units" should not be there. So we're talking the maximum height of the dwellings themselves, the buildings themselves. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the, the maximum height that is there is consistent with what we allow for multifamily units, dwellings elsewhere in, in town. So 9.8.6 establishes notes to, to the table. By special permit, the Planning Board can vary any of the dimensional requirements, provided that the height of a dwelling does not exceed 48 feet. And as, you know, Paige indicated earlier, we were initially thinking perhaps of 70 feet, but for the reasons that, you know, Paige specified, we, we went back to this. So 48 feet would typically be a four-story building. And I think the highest that we have in town, the only multifamily dwelling in town that is four-story is, is, is the Sylvan.
We have Sylvan.
And that was pursuant to a comprehensive permit. Note 2 is that lots in the, in the overlay district may contain one, more than one multifamily dwelling. So you can have two, you can have three, whatever is appropriate. And the third note is that the number of stories that a dwelling has is restricted only by the, by the height. A change that I would like to make is in 9.8.6.1. After the word "accessory structure," I would like to add in a parentheses, including any multi-level parking structure. So in other words, a parking structure, multi-level parking structure, which we allow later on in the, in the proposal, will not be greater in height than any, any dwelling to which it's an accessory. 9.8.7 starts with parking requirements. There are a number of provisions here. I do have one change that I'll get to in a second. As you can see, in 9.8.7.2, we're saying that a development is to provide a maximum of 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit. I know this was a matter that was discussed, to some degree, at the, at the joint meeting. The other bylaws that I have seen are consistent with this. Obviously, elsewhere in the, in the bylaw, as far as multifamily dwellings, we, we do allow considerably more than this. I think we allow two per dwelling unit, plus an additional four, for, you know, guests or visitors. Bear in mind that the more parking spaces we provide, the less area there is to develop, and that's going to obviously constrict the ability to comply with the, the guidelines. 1.5 parking spaces was part of the modeling, I believe, correct?
Correct, yes. It was part of the what?
It was part of the modeling that was done to determine whether we're consistent with, and compliant with the state guidelines.
But you also gave the opportunity in, in this scenario for them to do a structure that would have, would make up the difference.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So as we go on, we're, we're talking about the other provisions that, you know, that, that pertain to parking. Some of these are very similar to the provisions that we added to the bylaw. I think it was in 2018 to help spur development on, on Route 1. You know, for example, shared parking spaces and parking, multi-level parking structures. The change that I would like to make is in Section 9.8.7.7, at the very end where I say that the use complies with the parking requirements that are set forth in Section 9.8.7.1. It should be 9.8.7.2. And as you go along, you'll see there, there are requirements relative to electric charging stations, requirements relative to bicycle spaces. And again, that's consistent with what I've seen both in other bylaws, and as well as the, you know, the model law. 9.8.8 provides that all dwellings, all dwelling developments have to be compliant with the Planning Board's performance standards. You know, the standards that are already set forth in the, in the zoning bylaw. 9.8.9 deals with a mandatory provision relative to affordable dwelling units, where allowed to only have 10% of the dwelling units be affordable. If the town had a 40R, we could go up to 20%, but the compliance guidelines allow us only to have a maximum of, of 10% of the total dwelling units be, be affordable. The affordable units must be consistent, though, with the, or comparable to the, the market rate units. 9.8.10 subjects developments to Planning Board Site Plan Review. And 9.8.11 is a severability provision. And then we followed this with, with a number of revisions to various zoning bylaw provisions to ensure that current provisions in the bylaw would be consistent with the, with the proposed new draft.
So can I get, can I just back you up to, to one thing, Barn?
Sure.
On that, on that thing about the 10%?
Mm-hmm.
For affordable?
Mm-hmm.
Was that part of the state's requirement? Or because, because in the past, you know, 40, 40B would allow for 25% in order to get, count 100% of the units in the affordable category. So with that 10%, do they all meet the same thing? They, as, as an affordable, or it's, it's, it's only that 10% gets counted towards the affordability?
I don't know, because there's nothing in, well, let me put it this way. There is nothing in the statute that deals with affordability.
Okay.
The compliance guidelines do allow for 10% maximum. And again, if you have a 40R, you can go up to 20%. But there's nothing specific in the guidelines that, that address that issue. I, I would think it would be handled the same way, but I just have no idea.
You don't know either, Paige?
I don't think anybody knows. I mean, I don't, it hasn't been done yet, but there's been no indication yet that they would apply 100%. And so they might not, because that was a 40B provision, or an interpretation. I think best-case scenario is it does apply, even though it's all fake numbers. But I would think we should conservatively assume they might not do that, just because it, you know, it has led to this overinflation of affordable housing in communities.
Okay. Thank you.
And we can't do, like Barney pointed out, we can't do more than 10%. I mean, unless we do a 40R. So that's the interesting thing. Of all this housing, it didn't even allow for affordable housing until the, the guidelines came in. And it's maxed out at 10%. And we just figured we didn't want to lose any ground, you know, especially with 1152 potential units.
No, that's fine. I just was trying to clarify it in my mind about what the difference was between the, the traditional and the, and this new one, that's all.
Yeah, I think the biggest difference is that this is not subject to, again, there's nothing in the statute that deals with the affordability, so. Whereas with, with the 40B, you not only have statutory provisions, but you have a fairly rigorous, detailed regulatory provisions.
And just to confirm, I think I asked this at the joint meeting, that this, there, this requirement's 1152, but even if we didn't have a station, we'd still have to do like 852 or something close there? Because we're a butters to Townswood stations?
Yes, 768.
Okay.
Yes.
If we were an adjacent community.
Yep, if we were just adjacent. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
It is a lot to digest.
Would, would the board like to, would like me to check to see if the room is available for a January 17th meeting? And would the Craft Group be able to get their people together for January 17th? If possible? Good, all right. I will, I will look into it tomorrow when the scheduler is available.
Is that Diana? Oh. You can't text her?
Or Gabby changing her hat.
No, no, no. Not Diana.
No, Gabby changing the hat, yeah.
Okay, so potential January 17th?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
And I think that that could help us get back on track.
I agree.
A little bit.
I'm up for that.
Thank you.
Anything else we have tonight?
We do have another discussion.
Oh, okay, let's do that.
Another bylaw amendment.
Okay, so, ready for me again?
Yeah.
This is our other project, which is the auditorium reuse project. Just to give folks at home the highlights, we are looking at the disposition of the auditorium. It's in a condition right now where it's, it's approaching the need to be torn down. And we've actually gotten estimates for half a million dollars it would cost the town to demolish it.
Paige?
We have, yeah.
Paige, for those at home, this is the, the brick building.
State hospitals.
Behind the Public Safety Building.
Thank you, you're right. It is. On Payson Road, correct. I'm sorry about that. I've been, I've been living and breathing this building for a while, so. Yes, so that building is something that I know folks, some folks are very interested in preserving it. And, you know, we have looked at it as whether it could be a future community center, or I think I've told you folks that I've had numerous parties come look at it to see if, you know, we had a brew pub look at it, we had a doctor's office, we've had restaurants. Just taking a look at it, and no one ever comes back. It's in a pretty rough shape. It's basically a shell, and from, we'd had an architectural evaluation done, working with the town's Asset Review Committee, in which Gary's a member. We, and so is Kevin, I think. Not sure, I forget now. But anyway, we looked at that, and we've learned that it's, it's, it's almost to the point where it's going to start to fall down. The roof is compromised, and it's getting a lot of damage. And so it's, it's sort of a now or never thing. So we've been looking at whether we're going to demolish it, and just, you know, keep the land, or what we want to do. So I've been working to figure out the barriers. And one of the concerns was with the Recreation Commission. The auditorium, the, the land on which the auditorium sits has a restriction on it that basically says it's for recreation use. Whereas the land behind it, sort of, I guess, the old T building up top of the hill there, is just, is restricted to municipal use. Any use out here would require a legislative change, and I could get to that. That's not as big of a hurdle as it sounds. We've actually been working with DCAM, which is a state agency that controls all that, and they are quite in favor, and in fact, they've offered to write the legislation. We've also had Senator Feeney and Rep. Barrows involved. They actually helped facilitate the meeting with DCAM. So from that perspective, that does not seem like a major barrier. The concern was that recreation, this came up last year, and Recreation wasn't very interested in losing the building. But when presented with the facts about the status of the building and the cost to upgrade, they realized that really the town doesn't have it in their wherewithal to renovate this building or use it for any purpose. The only thing we would be able to do, and it's, again, at a half a million dollars, we'd have to tear it down, seems that the, the members of Rec Commission would rather have the building saved. And I pointed out to them that in order to have this building saved, really, the only way to do it is for someone to make some money off of it. Apropos to our last discussion, folks aren't too in favor of more apartments. So we floated the idea of perhaps a condominium development with ownership. We've been, Kevin's been a little bit involved in discussions, as have Gabby, where we've been talking about making it Foxborough-friendly. So we're looking at an RFP, which would stipulate that there'd be up to 10 condos allowed in that building, and that the Foxborough residents would have the right of first refusal on that. So it's kind of a local preference built into the RFP. We've also been looking at a proposal to allow an assisted living facility in the area behind the building, the auditorium, up on the top of the hill where the T building was. We're looking, I think, at about 84 units. Again, this would all be stipulated by an RFP. And that's, the reason for that is, right now, Foxborough doesn't have an assisted living facility. If you, you know, require the need for one, you have to leave town. And we know how passionately people feel about staying in Foxborough and living here their, their whole lives. And so, and I know the State Hospital campus always contemplated that use, so that you could basically start out in your first apartment there, move up through all the continuum of housing options on the property, and then, you know, end your days at the assisted living. So with all that said, we did go to Recreation. They voted to support this. We went to, met with Bill Yuchna on the behalf of the Permanent Building Committee, and he had some concerns around making sure that there was going to be adequate parking for the Public Safety Building. So he's now signed up on the concept, and the Select Board signed off on the concept. And so now, the next step is we want to bring forward to town meeting in May the zoning proposal that our trustee zoning guru Barney has drafted. So that's what you have in front of you, is just a couple bylaw requirements, and that would allow the type of development we just contemplated. There would be many more steps, as I mentioned. We'd have to go to town meeting, the Select Board would have to vote, they'd have to be authorized to dispose of it. We'd have to change the zoning, we'd have to get the legislative change, we'd have to issue an RFP. And we have to look into whether the State Hospital reuse plan has any binding, because that does have a limit on the number of housing units. There is no committee like that anymore, so there's been a thought of whether the Planning Board could act in that, their stead. And Kevin, I would defer to you, and I was also thinking of checking with Town Council on that. But this, tonight, what we're here to talk about is to just daylight again. We'll have a public hearing next month to start talking about the zoning requirements. And with that, I'll turn it over to Barney to just give you, there's only a couple of these, luckily.
Yeah, these are three pretty simple changes. So the, the first one, the addition of a sentence to Section 9.6.1.1. The current sentence says, this will permit the total construction of 152 total residential units in the CPOD. So adding the 84 units in, in the proposed assisted living facility and the 10 condominium units, we, we get 246 in the Chestnut-Payson Overlay District, and 297 in the areas that would, would have, that comprised what was, once the Foxborough State Hospital. And that's adding what, what, what is in the, the reuse plan to the, to the 94. The second change, which is amending Table 9-1. Table 9-1 in use is right now says, assisted living, comma, age-restricted senior housing. No place else in the Chestnut-Payson Overlay District, bylaw provisions is the, are the words, "age-restricted senior housing," used. And inasmuch as the proposal is, again, to just deal with assisted living, I feel that it's appropriate to delete the reference to "age-restricted senior housing." Section 9.6.7.12C, let me tell you how it reused right now. This deals with maximum residential density for assisted living, comma, age-restricted senior housing, and that's the only other place it, it appears. Seven dwelling units per acre. Seven dwelling units per acre obviously won't, won't fly with the assisted living facility. I, I put 40 in there as a round number. To reach 84 units, though, we would only need 37 per acre. If we made it. If we made it 38 units per acre, we get to 86. If we make it 39 units per acre, it gets us to 88. If we use 40, it gets us to 91. So I can go any of those numbers, but 37 theoretically, multiplied by the 2.28 acres for that parcel of land, is slightly more than 84. I just like round numbers.
So then that, just for a good justification, that assisted living slash age-restricted senior housing was originally intended to go where the shopping center is now. That was a sort of a medical use there, and that was the original intention?
Where Conrad's is?
Yes. And then they came back to us and said, they didn't think they could do that. Could they do the shopping center? And we allowed that to be...
Seems pretty straightforward.
I mean, I think it is pretty straightforward, and I think it's finally a resolution to something that's just been an eyesore, you know, unfortunately. The intentions were very good, and it's just never really happened. And the costs have become prohibitive, and there's some parties that are interested in doing it, so.
We've got some parties that are interested in doing it, and it's not going to cost the town money to demolish the building.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, we'd lose the liability we have now.
It'll be sad to see it go, but it's got to go.
So do we need to take a vote on this? Or no, just a comment?
Well, again, it'll be a public hearing, whenever. I'm going to have two other small zoning provisions to consider at public hearing.
Related to this or separate?
No. One is to change the definition in the table of uses. And I'll, I don't want to get into it now, explain in detail how we got there as to why we need to make a change. The second, there's a discrepancy between the table of uses and one of the definitions as far as accessory structures. So that's to correct that, those discrepancies.
I just picture Barney every day, just reading over our zoning bylaws over and over.
I'm like a monk.
Well, we appreciate all you do.
Barney and Gabby, can we make sure we get those two articles in as placeholders right now ASAP for Katie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for attending.
I'm glad you're not feeling ill.
No, I'm feeling great.
Is the rest of your family ill?
No, I was the only one, and we were together 24/7 on vacation for four days, and there were six of us, no, seven of us, and I'm the only one.
Well, you're special.
But I got it out of the way. I won't have it. I'm going to Aruba later in February, so at least I don't have to worry about it then. So I'm trying to look at the silver linings.
Yep, and you're not sick, so that's huge.
No. I mean, I felt a little under the weather for like 10 minutes. I miss New Year's Eve and all that, but yeah, it was good to come back to work today, believe it or not.
Are we good?
Going to close the meeting?
No, we have a continued public hearing for 30-32 Wall Street.
Okay.
And before I spoke with the attorney earlier in December, when they had asked for a continuance from this meeting, and I advised them that they needed to submit the revised plans before tonight's meeting for them to, for us to continue the hearing till January 26. They have not. So I would like to recommend that the board continue the public hearing to sometime of one of the February meetings. If we're going to have the public hearing on the 8th, I would like to continue to the second meeting, February 22.
Yeah, I'll be zooming on that one, but that's okay.
Okay. I make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding a special permit site plan for 30-32 Wall Street, a proposed remodel and expansion of an office commercial mixed-use project, TNC Development LLC, True North Construction, Inc., to our meeting on February 22.
22nd.
22nd.
7:15?
At 7:15.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
We good?
Yeah, are we good?
Yes, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.